Call the December 20 City of Des Moines Plan and Zoning Commission meeting to order. Again, welcome. These are our rules and procedures. The Plan and Zoning Commission is an advisory body to the City Council. The City Council will hold a public hearing and make a final decision on all matters before this commission, other than site plan and subdivision flats, unless denials or conditional approvals are appealed. Please contact the city clerk or the community development staff for details on council hearings. Applicants are given 10 minutes to present their request, and then proponents and then opponents from the public are allowed to speak in that order, with each speaker allowed a maximum of five minutes. The applicant is then allowed five minutes for rebuttal. The hearing then will be closed, and the commission will discuss and vote on the issue. All comments are to be germane to the item under consideration, and speakers are to maintain a courteous manner. Items listed in the consent portion of the agenda will not be individually discussed and will be considered for approval in accordance with the recommendation of the staff report, unless an individual present or a member of the commission requests that that item be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately under the public hearing agenda. The City of Des Moines is pleased to provide accommodations to individuals or groups with disabilities and encourages participation in the city government. To better serve you when possible, please notify the city at least three business days in advance at (283) 4209 should special accommodations be required. Assistant listening devices are available for these meetings. Plan and zoning commission meetings are broadcast on Media Cable Channel 7.1 or 7.2 for customers with that service. Transportation to City of Des Moines meetings can be scheduled to and from Dart Central Station at 620 Cherry Street. To reserve your route, please call Dart on-call scheduling at (283) 8136. Calls for trips will be accepted up until 5:00 PM of the day prior to the meeting. Please be sure to mention in your request that you require transportation for the City of Des Moines meetings at this location. This notice is intended to comply with accessibility requirements of the Americans with Disabilities Act. And now, we have established a quorum. Is there action on the minutes of our December 6 meeting?
I'll move approval.
Thank you. All those in favor of approving the minutes of the December 6 Plan and Zoning Commission meeting, please signify by raising your hand. Thank you. Are there any objections? And are there any abstentions? Thank you. Now, at this time, there are several items in our consent agenda. What I'm going to do is read these items, and unless there is anyone here in the audience to hear these items, no, the first thing I'm going to do is read item number three in the consent agenda. This is a request from Home, Inc. to rezon property at 1321 and 1325 Fremont Street. I understand that the requister would like to continue this item to the January 17th meeting, is that correct?
That is correct, and they were not able to schedule their neighborhood meeting, so my understanding is that's been set up for January 4th, and that they will have had that then by the next Plan and Zoning Commission meeting.
Okay, is there a representative in the audience tonight from Home, Inc.? And is that correct? You would like to continue to January 17th? Thank you. And was there anybody in the audience that wishes to hear that item tonight? All right, seeing none, then we will. Is there a motion to move this item to our January 17th meeting?
I move it.
Okay. There's been a motion to move item number three to continue to the January 17th Plan and Zoning Commission meeting. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, thank you. And now, I'm going to read the remainder of the consent items, and again, unless there is anyone in the audience that wishes to hear them, they will remain on consent, and the staff recommendation will be the vote. So, item number one, is a city-initiated request for determination as to whether the proposed Drake Urban Renewal Plan for an area generally located south of University Avenue between 27th Street and the half-block east of 26th Street, plus the University Avenue right-of-way between 23rd and 34th Street, is in conformance with the Plan Des Moines Creating Our Tomorrow Plan. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to pull this item from consent tonight? Seeing none, is there anyone on the commission that wishes to pull this item from consent? All right. Item number two is a request from River Point West to rezon property located in the 400th block of Southwest 11th to determine whether the proposed rezoning is in conformance with the existing Plan Des Moines to rezon the property from C-3B Central Business Mixed Use District to PUD, to amend the Gray Station PUD conceptual plan to reduce the plan area, removing a portion of the subject property, and approval of the slate at Gray's Landing conceptual plan for development up to 250 multiple-family residential dwelling for senior living within two four-story buildings. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes us to pull this item from consent tonight? Seeing none, is there anyone on the commission that wishes to hear this item? All right, item number two will remain on consent. Item number, and item number three is deferred. Item number four is a request from NGREC, Inc. to rezon property located at 938 12th Street, the determination as to whether this rezoning is in conformance with the existing Plan Des Moines, and to rezon from M1 Light Industrial to MPC to allow property to be redeveloped with 14-row townhome dwellings. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes us to remove this item from consent? Seeing none, is there anyone on the commission that wishes to remove this item? All right. And then, finally...
I think you can go ahead and vote on those.
Okay, okay. So, we will vote on the consent items as read. Is there a motion?
I move to approve items one and two and four.
Thank you. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All right. So, those consent items are approved, and now, we're moving on to the public hearing items that's listed in your agenda, and it is my understanding that item number five, which is a request from TK Development for approval of a second amendment to the major preliminary plat for Southwest Woods Estate on property located at 3800 Southwest 56th, which the requister wishes to defer this item to January 17th, is that correct?
That is correct.
Is the applicant with us tonight?
I don't see the applicant. The discussion is that they want to meet with the adjoining owner to the south to, we're working on a solution for street connections.
So, they need to have other meetings before...
Yeah, they want to have another gathering with the property owner to the south.
All right. Is there anyone in the audience that was here to hear this item tonight? All right, seeing none, anyone on the commission want to make a motion to continue this item number five to January 17th?
I'll move that we continue till January 17th.
Thank you. All those in favor of continuing item number five to our January 17th commission meeting, please signify by raising your hand. Okay, thank you. Item number six is a request from JS Baker Properties to determine whether proposed rezoning is in conformance with Plan Des Moines and to rezon property from a limited C2 general retail and highway-oriented commercial district to a revised limited C2 general retail and highway-oriented commercial district. The original staff recommendation was a denial, and I understand that the applicant agrees to the conditions...
The alternate, yeah.
The alternate recommendation is commissioned. Feel comfortable with the recommendations that were listed in the agenda as the alternative. And the applicant agrees to this. Is the applicant with us tonight?
He was here. I think he might have left after he agreed to that, so...
Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to hear this item? All right, seeing none, and is there any motion to move this item?
For approval.
For approval. Subject to the conditions that were listed in the alternate.
It's a move.
Thank you. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Thank you. Item number eight, if I might, just skip ahead for a minute, is a request from Brown Dog Realty to review and approval of a site plan under design guidelines for extension of parking on property located at 2110 Wakanda View Drive to allow extension of off-street parking, and I understand that the applicant wishes to continue this item toward January meeting.
Yes, they requested it to allow the designer to do some alternate design to hopefully meet all of the comments from the Permit and Development Center.
Is the applicant with us tonight?
I don't see the applicant.
They left, too?
I don't think they were here.
Oh, okay. They must have heard about the treats that we offered tonight. All right, so, is there a motion from the commission to move this item to our January 17th meeting?
It's a move.
Thank you. The motion is to move item number eight to the January 17th Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All right, thank you. So, that leaves us with item number seven. This is a request from Des Moines University to rezon property located at 3200 Grand Avenue.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, thanks for being here tonight, and so we can reach a quorum and dispense of the business for the evening. This item number six is Des Moines University...
Seven.
Seven, I'm sorry. Is the Des Moines University is the applicant. They are here to request a rezoning of property that's south of their existing campus. This is 31st Street on the east. Grand Avenue is their front address of their main campus. It's just off the picture, and then, the south edge of their property is actually down here. They are wanting to re, they have initially requested to rezon what's in the gold area. This is carved out separately because that's an area that was rezoned with a condition that's as listed on the agenda, where they were restricted that there be no further extension of parking to serve the use occurring upon the property into the adjoining land zone to single-family residential district classification. At that time, the commission and the city council wanted that condition placed on there to require them to follow a rezoning process in order to make any changes to extend parking, because at that time, and even now, we can allow extension of parking without a zoning change into residential districts, and they did not want that to be done as a matter of right. They wanted it to come back through a process if that was ever to be requested in the future. So, the day has come now where the applicant is desiring to extend parking in addition to have a emergency backup generator placed on the site to support their research laboratories from power outages, and I'll let them get into the depth of that. They did supply us with a rezoning sketch, and I'll zoom out here in a second so you can see the whole thing. So, this is the area that would be already zoned R4, and then, the area they want to add in as well, combined into their concept here. I'm pointing the pen at the area where they would want the generator to be located. They're also showing landscaping in that to obscure that from residential and absorb sound, and then, they are also showing this area down here that would extend parking off of an area that's already been established historically by right through that extension of parking. So, those are the two initiatives, I believe, that are driving this request at this time. They did not qualify that with their application, that they didn't want to allow further development on this property, so that was a concern of staff in reviewing this. So, when we reviewed this, we were definitely sensitive to issues with regard to stormwater, as there have historically been stormwater issues. I'll let them speak to recent investments they've made to reestablish and upgrade their stormwater detention facility to protect the neighborhood to the south where the water, the drainage way goes naturally, to protect it from big rain events like we've had this year, for example. So, and they've cooperated with our stormwater utility here as of late to do that redesign, and that's actually under construction. I'll show you some photos, or was already constructed, and I will show you some photos of that area here in a second. So, with those two, staff does have concern about the residences to the east. Some of these are owned by the university, other ones are privately owned. Certainly, they all deserve the protection of our zoning from commercial use, such as parking and other things, so we do want to make sure if this rezoning is passed, that there be things in place to protect. So, this is a photo, zoom back in. As you come in off the east driveway, looking to the west, so this is the Ryan Hall building that's the furthest building south on the property. You can see this fencing that's right around the recently upgraded detention facility. This is that existing parking lot, so we're looking essentially west, a little bit southwest. This is looking through that parking area that's established more southwest, and again, you can see some orange fencing here that's in place to, I think they want it to protect the area so that the ground cover can establish on the detention basin. This is looking more directly south into the neighborhood from that, you can see the curb in the front ground, that's the southern edge of the existing parking, so the proposed parking will remove some trees to be able to extend that further. If you look way down in the background, you can see the bottom of the hill area. And then, this is looking just south of that academic building to the south. Again, we're looking a little bit to the southeast into the basin, which has been upgraded. And then, this is looking more due east, southeast, so you can see the residences that front 31st Street. And then, I have one more. This is like a head-on straight south into the area that they would put the generator, that they're proposing the generator. Again, as I had mentioned, staff is concerned about how the neighborhood may be impacted in this situation due to the improvements, given the sensitivity of the land and the proximity of the neighbors, staffs of the opinion that we need to take incremental approach in this case, and let's deal with the immediate needs and look to accommodate those with zoning change with conditions that will protect the neighborhood, and only, like, the first item that we would ask for is that it only be limited to the area that they need for the improvements of the parking and the generator. So, they would just carve an area that would be contiguous to their existing R4 zoning. We would want to legally define that before this would go in front of the city council and have it mapped, so that will be shown. I don't think we have it exactly here tonight. They may have something to be able to show you from that standpoint. We also want to make sure that the uses are only allowed to have the R180 that's already allowed in the property, and then, surface off-street parking, which is what they're proposing to extend, and then, accessory emergency power generator equipment, and that would be the only things that could be allowed in this area that they would add into their R4 zoned property. Then, we would not, we would want a similar provision that would say they would not be able to exercise that extension of parking further, which they could do under a site plan that would come in front of you, but would not have the same process as rezoning. So, rather than just allowing that to happen at any time, we would want them to, again, amend the zoning if they wanted further extension. Off-street parking and emergency power generator equipment shall be subject to a site plan review by the Permit and Development Center and shall provide appropriate residential protection to the satisfaction of the planning administrator. Again, this is already a requirement of that project, had it been zoned correctly at this time. We want to add that in there to ensure that that step is clear to the neighbors and to any other future leadership of Des Moines University, you know, into the future, that that's the case. Any development shall... Any development shall comply with the city's tree removal and mitigation ordinance. As you can see, there's going to be some trees that would be impacted by those projects. We want to make sure that they are providing the required mitigation by the city's ordinance as part of any development in that fashion. So, again, by putting it in the zoning conditions, it's recorded and would be discoverable by anybody into the future. Any lighting for off-street parking areas shall be pedestrian in scale with a maximum height of 20 feet, providing cutoff fixtures to the satisfaction of the planning ministry. We want to make sure that the parking is safe and has appropriate lighting that does not present an impact on the nearby residences by being of a scale that's appropriate. That might require more fixtures to do that, but we do not want tall fixtures that can be obtrusive with the light into the neighborhood. So, and we, again, we would review that very similar to the way we do a number of other types of site plans where that's actually, there's actual standards where we don't want any type of illumination measurement at the property line, basically. So, the last one is that the property owner shall be required to annually submit a stormwater detention maintenance report to the city stormwater utility to demonstrate continued functional operation of the approved stormwater management improvements. In the event that said report does not demonstrate continued functional operation, the property owner shall comply with the city recommendation to repair or maintain said improvements within a timeline approved by the city's public works director or be subject to public nuisance or similar legal action by the city. And there was, in the email communication, I have to disclose that there was email communication from a member on the Commission that's not here, Mike Simonson, who was seeking to add a provision in there that that review be done by an independently hired civil engineer. And from staff's perspective, we're not going to support that because I think it's our opinion that a licensed professional doing the report can be adequately reviewed by our city staff to make sure that it's independently managed. So, I think adding that third step just adds expense, and I'm not sure you're going to achieve anything else unless there's complete mistrust of both the city and the applicant in that case. We would recommend just leaving the condition as is. I do want to show you the, I did pass around all the cards that we received in communication. The outside line is the 250 around the rezoning, and then the inside line is the 200 statutory provision. 4.7% in objection based on that 200 distance. I do want to let you know that by our policy, we notify around their entire property at 250 feet. So there was a number of people that got notice of this hearing that are outside of this statutory distance that's considered for that provision. So there will definitely be people that sent cards. Those were in two piles, some that were from outside the area, some that were from inside the area.
So you may explain where the, where this data comes from?
Say that again?
This data comes from the 250?
This will be within the 250. There would, we also got responses from property owners outside that because we notified based on Des Moines University's overall property boundary.
So Eric, just to clarify, the state code requires notification, and if there's opposition by more than 20% of the property owners within 200 feet of the property, it would trigger a 6/7 vote of the City Council to override that opposition. In this instance, there's only 4.7% opposition within 200 feet of the subject property, so it would not automatically trigger a 6/7 vote of the council at this point.
Right. The objection by the property owners in written petition does not trigger that provision. That said, on your, you have a Part A, B, and C. Part B is to also amend the future land use of this area from a low-density residential to a public, semi-public. And to do that, you do need 2/3 of your quorum present to vote in support of that. And if there isn't a 6 out of 8 members this evening to vote to approve that, the land use amendment would require a 6/7 vote of our City Council.
And that was on C?
That was on B.
B.
Part B, which is the Plan DSM Amendment.
Madam Chair, I have a question for Eric, please. Eric, when the cards went around, I noticed there were considerably more red marks than green marks, and I realized that the data that you're giving is the legal limit, as it were. But my question is this, you looked at the cards a lot more closely than we've had a chance to look at them. Give me an idea, basically, of some kind of a percentage, or some kind of a number, or some kind of a comparison of the reds as opposed to the greens in the area that are not shown on the map.
I don't think that would be a good thing for me to do. Because I couldn't accurately do that. I couldn't give you a good assessment of that.
That's fair comment. I will say to the public, however, that the opposition far outweighed in the outside area those that were in favor.
And, certainly, and you're basing that on the frequency of the number of card, or the number of communications, letters, cards? And the provision, just to note, the provision that's in the code is based on the land area. So theoretically, one owner of 20% of the property could be an objection and trigger that provision, so.
Could be, but...
But, so you're speaking to the preponderance of the number of separate property owners that have responded?
That's correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Eric? All right, seeing none, applicant?
And I did want to say, anyone that comes and speaks, I will help you out if you need to show anything up here. Don't be afraid to ask.
Thank you.
And please, give your name for the record, and sign in if you speak.
Thank you. Madam Chair, members of the Commission, my name is Dan Manning, Sr., 317 Sixth Avenue, Suite 300, Des Moines, Iowa, representing Des Moines University. With me this evening is Susan Huppert. She's the Chief of External and Governmental Affairs for Des Moines University. Mark Pfeifer, Mark is the CFO for Des Moines University. And Steve Grasso. Steve is an engineer and architect with GTG who's assisted Des Moines University in their efforts to deal with their stormwater detention facility, to address their parking needs, and to address the challenges that they've had with energy and the need for the generator that needs to be located on the site. There have been numerous meetings with Sue and with, and Mark, with your staff. There have been meetings throughout this process with Mark and Sue, with the neighborhood, the neighbors. What we, what I'd like to be clear about is that, is the area that we're talking about, I think, I want to make sure that everyone understands, the area that initially was requested for the rezoning, the staff's response to Des Moines University has been to take this incrementally. You've laid out a requirement, a need, to deal, address parking based upon the issues that you have with overcrowded parking on-site. You've clearly established that there have been numerous outages that's affected your ability to effectively teach your student body to address the needs of the university. And for that reason, they understand, let's look at this incrementally. And we want to be clear with you tonight that what we did initially when we made this application was to try to rezone the property to address the, try to make it even, try to make the boundaries work out appropriately. But based upon the information from staff, also the recommendations from neighbors, and they said, "Well, what other plans do you have for this property?", we were clear that we, the only thing that we really needed to achieve right now was to address the parking and to address the generator. Both of those were our needs. So when the staff came back and said, "We want you to handle this and do this incrementally", we agreed to that. And we want to make sure that you understand tonight that our application is not for all of that property any longer. It is simply to address the specific needs that we have. Now, we have also, it's been made clear to us through the meetings with the neighbors and through the meetings with the staff, that in the event that we need to do anything in the future, and we will, it's inevitable, we believe, that we're going to have to address issues that come up over the remaining years. We'll do that in as transparent a way as we possibly can, as a part of an overall analysis, and try to get the staff, the city staff involved, and the community and the neighborhood involved on any other additions or matters that we need to address. The university's going to start out in 2019 putting together an analysis and a plan, and they'll include the city personnel as well as the neighborhood in that process. So, I guess we want to make sure that everyone understands that what that rezoning is going to be is just the area where the parking lot is going to go, and the area where the generator needs to be located. Now, as I mentioned, we have Sue Huppert here, we have Mark Pfeifer here, they can answer questions for you. But the most important thing, I think, is for, maybe to give you a little more information and try to respect the time limits that were given in this process. And we have Steve Grasso come up and address specifically the issue of the parking, the issue of the generator, and then also touch on the stormwater detention facility that was, this year, the university did an overhaul of the detention, onsite detention facility at a cost of approximately $250,000. It's been reviewed and approved by the city staff, and we'd like to have you address that right now, Steve, if you could. Before Steve comes up, if you have any specific questions of me, feel free. Otherwise, we'll ask Mr. Grasso to address the board.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Commission. My name is Steve Grasso, architect, 6505 Merle Hay Road, Johnston. About a year ago, we started working on this project, and at that time, it became apparent that the city's long-range plan was actually to take the yellow area, which is essentially the boundary of Des Moines University, and have that come up with a new designation. So, we had a plan in place, you would have seen us about a year ago talking about this parking lot. But then, when that became apparent, we decided to wait. Because if that plan is approved, both of these uses are in conformance and compliance.
I think if you could speak closer to the mic, and then, Eric, do we have a pointer that he can use so he doesn't have to move away from the mic?
I got a pen, I mean, we don't have our good pointer.
I know, the City Council confiscated it. Thank you.
Pick up where I left off, or do you want me to restart?
Where you left off, it's fine.
So, that, the yellow boundary is campus. The yellow boundary is what's in the Plan DSM for it to be become a different use or be reclassified. So we put our plans on hold. It's still, it hasn't come forward like we wanted it to come forward, so the need is too great. We need this generator, we need this parking. So we're back here with you now, a year later, to talk specifically about those two projects. The blue line that you see there, the blue dash line, is the existing separation between R4 and R180. In meeting with staff, we said, "You know, we really don't need all that. That will be part of Plan DSM." So as Dan Manning said, we came up with a simpler solution, and that's where the blue line comes from. Now with the recent staff recommendations to come into something even more precise, we're good with that. And we'll work with staff to come up with an area more defined, specifically to address those two needs, the generator and the parking lot. I'm going to take you down, and we'll look a little bit closer now at this corner of the world right here to talk about those projects in specifics. Okay, so on the left here is the generator, the detention basin, and the parking lot. To talk specifically about the generator, it'll be one, there's already two generators on campus, so this would be a third generator. As Eric, or as, yes, as Eric said, it serves primarily Ryan Hall, which is the Science and Education Building. Within that building, we have students and staff, three-story building, teaching and testing every day. So sound is just as important to the university as it is to the neighborhood. Also, within that building, the university applies for grants, gets research assistants to come in, perform long-term research. If, that research has to be done within a very specific temperature and humidity band. They can't have any variation. If it gets outside that band, their research is garbage, and they need to start over. So, power is important to them. In the last 10 years, they've had 25 outages. 25 startovers. So, that's where the need for the generator comes into play. It's big, it's probably going to be about the size of a semi-truck trailer. Part of the reason it's so big is because it comes from the factory with a shroud on it to help contain and mitigate any sound that comes out of the generator. That shroud also takes that sound and pushes it upwards. Based on the data that we have gotten from the manufacturer, by the time you get out to the property line, so the generator's here, the nearest property... Eric, I'm sorry, I'm going to screw you up. So the generator is there, and by the time you come to the closest property, that's 335 feet. At that point, that corner of that lot, it'll be about 50 decibels. That's comparable to a quiet suburb, to normal conversation of you and I talking back and forth to each other. That's, that's how loud it'll be. It gets tested once a month for 30 minutes. Des Moines University's standard procedure is to test it at 9:00 a.m. on a weekday, you know, right in the middle of their curriculum. It'll run for 30 minutes, and then annually, they have to run it for two hours. And that is done at midday on a weekday. Again, part of their standard operating procedure. Just to talk about the detention basin there, and just to touch on that, myself, I've been at four neighborhood meetings, and I've probably met with staff that equal number of times. For this parking lot here, it was obvious that there was going to be a need and a concern that that's more impervious pavement. Where's that water going to go? So, this year, this past year, the university took the initiative to improve that detention basin. It's now wider, deeper, longer than it was before. It's not improved just for the parking lot, it's improved for the whole campus. These dark lines here are feeders. Before this summer, each one of those were, they're 15- to 18-inch diameter concrete pipes. So they collect water from different parts of campus, and they bring it to this depression in the ground. And prior to this summer, they just, the water just burped out on the ground right there, and it ran downhill to the detention basin. So we had a lot of erosion, a lot of sediment down in the basement, basin. This summer, part of the expense was to extend those lines all the way down to the north end. We built a stilling basin. That's a fancy name for a detention... That's a fancy name for a detention area in the ground that's going to catch the silt. So it'll catch the silt, the water will fill up, and then it'll overflow into the detention basin down here. The structure on the south end was also completely removed and replaced, and brought up to current water quality standards for the city of Des Moines. June 30th, end of June, first of July, we had that great big rainstorm, right, that made papers and flooded people out. Our basin, the uphill stuff wasn't done yet, but the downhill was done, and to our knowledge, there was no damage or complaints based on the basin at that time. So it had already been improved and tested by nature, albeit, we weren't ready, quite planning on it to happen just then, but it did. So that's the improvement there. The new parking lot would have the similar structure in it that would bring itself down to the new detention basin. While we're here on this page, that yellow line there is a little bit different than the line I showed you before, because that includes the residential properties. Those residential properties are owned by the university. So when we talk about this parking lot here, you can see that it has, there's three neighbors that are immediately adjacent, and then there's three rental properties, basically, that the university owns. Talk now about the parking lot. So on the right is an aerial photo. The gray area down here is the proposed parking lot. This is an enlargement of it. Again, in a typical scenario where this is zoned, and we've got a conforming use, we would really just focus on improving that edge, that edge of the new parking lot and how it relates to the neighbors. Part of our plan, which as you can see on this diagram here, is we're improving the whole length of the existing parking lot. The existing parking lot will have new vegetation, new plantings, and a new privacy fence. So we're not going just here, we're doing the whole length of the parking lot. The black dots here are the parking lot lights that Eric had talked about with the cutoff light to avoid light pollution. Just to give you an idea, there's roughly 740 parking stalls on campus. So we're asking for the ability to put 47 more. On campus, there's 1,300 students. There's faculty and staff, probably of almost the same number. There's folks that are coming to the clinic, so patients that come on an as-needed basis. They host public events, where they'll have a huge amount of people coming to use the, both, well, a couple of different large assembly halls that they have on campus. So at any given time, there could be a little or there could be a lot. It's a commuter campus, there's no onsite housing. You can do a lot of stuff from the safety of your apartment, but on test day, you have to come to campus. So again, there'll be times where it looks like maybe it's kind of quiet, but then there'll be other times when there's no place to park, and we have students parking in Wesley Acres, and we have students parking on the street on 31st Street. I might just put one more image in front of you, and then I'll get out of the way. This is an image from the new, the bottom picture here would be the new parking lot, looking back into the backyards of the neighboring houses. And then, the top image is actually the existing parking lot, looking into the back of the houses. That shows the new fencing and the new vegetation. Again, in meeting with the neighbors, there was a specific oak tree that was asked to be saved, so we've worked around that and saved that. The large purple bus that you see there is Des Moines University's mobile medical unit, that's been relocated. They rent space off-campus so that the neighbors don't have to look at that van anymore. They have an agreement with DART to get free bus passes for students and faculty. They have rental agreements with adjacent properties where students can park. There's no overnight parking allowed on campus. They have a third-party security system or company that comes through, and you cannot park overnight. So we're trying real hard to get cars out of there every day, but again, there are all these events that happen where there's just no place to park.
Are there any questions for Mr. Grasso? Technically, your time is up. I don't know if you have anything else that you need to add before we move on to other comments?
Good, thank you.
And I just want to ask one more time, commission, any questions? All right, thank you, Mr. Grasso. So at this time, I'm going to ask if there's anybody in the audience who wishes to speak in favor, in favor of the proposal. Please step forward, state your name and address.
My name is Julie Russell, I'm the chair of the Unity Center of Des Moines on the Board of Trustees, and we're already neighbors with DMU, and I can say that they take really good care of their neighbors. They've invested in our parking lot, they've helped with, you know, we're a nonprofit, right? We need help, and they've been, they've been great neighbors. And I just wanted to offer our support. We've written a letter in support as well, and we believe that this rezoning would benefit the neighborhood because they keep taking care of that neighborhood. And that's my opinion, so thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm going to ask too, for any other speakers, both in favor and against, we have a limited amount of time tonight before we may again lose a quorum, so if you could keep your remarks timely, I'd say within three minutes, and if a case has already been stated that we've seen or heard before, it would be nice not to have repetitive comments, because we have read each of the written correspondence that we've seen today. So is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor of the proposal? All right, then seeing none, is there anyone who, or how many people are interested in speaking, either have questions in speaking against the proposal? Okay, so.
Twenty-six on this list.
Okay, so again, I want to remind the audience that we may lose a quorum, so if you could speak concise, consistent, to your point, we want to hear everybody, we've read all your comments, but we also would like to take action tonight. So if you'd like to line up, and then we'll just go through the list.
Hey, how's it going, guys? Nick Larson, President, Greenwood Historic Neighborhood Association, 127 34th Street, Des Moines, Iowa, 50312. Commissioners, in 2000, Des Moines University and the city of Des Moines made a promise to the residents of our neighborhood that no further expansion would occur on the green space to the south of their campus. The rezoning request before you today will remove the following encroachment limitation: There shall be no further extension of parking to serve the use occurring upon the property and to any of the adjoining land zoned to a single-family residential home. We are asking that the request before you be denied. After meeting with the members of our association, the board of the Greenwood Historic Neighborhood Association voted to oppose Des Moines University's request to rezone the property adjacent to our residential neighborhood. The Greenwood Historic Neighborhood Association further opposes Des Moines University's request to terminate the 18-year-old encroachment limitation placed on its property by the city of Des Moines. Des Moines University's request will accommodate construction of surface parking that they said would be less expensive than increasing the capacity of their existing parking garage. Making this decision in order to improve the bottom line of a tax-exempt commercial entity is not justification to diminish the residential aspect of our neighborhood and potentially decrease the property values of the adjacent residential properties. Greenwood Historic Neighborhood Association is also asking the city of Des Moines to do an annual inspection of the detention pond at Des Moines University. Prior to Des Moines University taking action to improve its detention pond, city inspectors indicated that the pond had been left to silt in and was functioning at a very low level. The city has purchased and demolished two homes at 3221 Elmwood and 121 Lincoln Place Drive at taxpayers' expense due to the impact of water runoff from the facilities on Grand Avenue. As appointed and elected officials, it is your civic duty to honor your commitments and agreements that are made to your constituents. Again, we are asking that the request before you be denied. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
My name is Rochelle Quiner, and I'm a Greenwood Historic Neighborhood resident and acting vice president of the Greenwood Historic Neighborhood Association. I would like to submit comments on behalf of my fellow residents concerning the environmental implications of Des Moines University's proposed rezoning of their property. Our concerns pertain to the potential impacts of the water quality, our wildlife habitat, and the increased water quantity which will be produced resulting in additional flooding. Water quality is a concern, as water from the proposed parking lot would surely run downstream. The Polk County Soil and Water Conservation District mentioned to me that they have seen similar scenarios where water runoff into residential areas from parking lots bring with it particulates of gasoline, oil, salt, antifreeze, and other sediment which would be passed on to our surrounding receiving body, the North Raccoon River. High bacteria counts in the soil have been noted around the city as a result of similar projects. The zoning board must consider not only the immediate future and lifespan of the proposed parking, but also the water quality issue after more infrastructure is added once rezoning is complete. Given the sensitive nature of the proposed site and the proximity of existing residential areas downstream, the almost certain contamination of the closely linked surface water and groundwater in the area would be disastrous for local residents and our wildlife. Our wildlife habitat is one of our strong assets as a neighborhood, and I think that we are a model for this in Des Moines. We have bats, fox, deer, birds, many other animals that depend on us to keep our dwindling urban green space intact. I met with an official for the Polk County Soil and Water Department at the site of the proposed parking lot, and he stated that the city would need to manage the additional runoff as a result of future development. My final point is that water quantity is perhaps, which will be displaced after a concrete parking lot is established, is perhaps our greatest environmental concern. Please refer to the following illustration, which I have passed out to you. I'm so, sorry, Eric, I might need your help with this. This is taken from the University of Iowa Flood Center website. This document shows the implication of a 100-year flood in the gray area, something I learned happens 1% of each year, not once every 100 years. Flooding is an issue in our neighborhood, and as you can see on this map, we are surrounded by floodwater after a major storm event. Looking more closely at our neighborhood, please refer to the second illustration. Point number one. Des Moines University built a detention pond in 1984, which up until the spring was not maintained. Two residences in our neighborhood, please see point number two and three in red, were lost due to flooding, which had to be mitigated by the city and paid for with our taxpayer dollars. Neighbors at our last meeting showed video of high floodwaters moving quickly behind their homes, sometimes even sweeping deer into the tributaries. Reading the stormwater plan myself, done on the behalf of DMU, it is of interest to note that the plan is based on a five-year storm event. This means that on any given year, that we as a neighborhood can assume that there is a 1 in 5 chance of a 20, or 20% of a chance of a well-maintained water detention basin overflowing. The report assumes that the pipes will stay clear of sticks and leaves. Lastly, the report is drawn off weather trends that are no longer stable, as it seems our likelihood of severe weather events increase yearly. Although DMU has clearly taken steps to fix the detention pond this year in preparation of their rezoning hopes, their lax of steps over the past 34 years to maintain the space and give little optimism that they will maintain any new infrastructure they put into place to protect our environment and our homes. In conclusion, we as a neighborhood stand against this rezoning application. Thank you very much for the opportunity to comment.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Lon Stager. I am a previous president of the Greenwood Historic Neighborhood Association, and I've lived in the neighborhood about 12 years. And I have to be honest with you, I've been involved in this since DMU started presenting, and this thing is just absurd, for many reasons. Groundwater is one thing that Rochelle recently pointed out, and I think the way DMU has gone about this has just not been honest, and that's continued tonight, right? And so if I can take you back to a year ago when this started, the initial meeting, I think it was a shotgun approach, sort of sneak this by the neighborhood before they really know about it. So there was a couple, two weeks before, this meeting was supposed to happen, January 24th last year, notices went out to a limited number of neighborhoods immediately around, and I live a little bit farther away, so I had a distressed senior citizen call me and say, "Hey, will you come and represent us?" Right? Again, two weeks, and so we show up, listen to their presentation for an hour, there's never, even to this moment, there's never been a demonstrated need for parking, and I'll point that out in a moment. What we're talking about is anecdotal, here or there, an event. Ingersoll Lives is a great event in the neighborhood, and this is an urban campus. Any city institution, at times, any festival downtown, has a parking issue, and on certain days, people are going to walk a little bit farther, Uber, whatever, that happens, right? So I'll give you a perfect example. Look at this picture, right? What do you notice about that picture? Not many cars, right? I mean, the ramp, I've walked this lot and driven through this lot many times in the last year to get a cross-section of different school days, different seasonality, and the common theme is, you drive through their lot most of the time, there aren't many cars. And that ramp, you want to talk about overflow parking, I mentioned this to Mr. Pfeifer a year ago, there's arms there. It's permit, it's permit parking for, you know, faculty or patients or what have you. So my suggestion was, why not utilize that ramp more when you've got overflow and allow students to park there? I've been in that ramp and on the roof, and what you see on the roof there, that's probably almost all the time. There's not that many cars, a majority of the spaces are empty, right? And there's never been a traffic study, we've never heard any substantial reason why we need more parking, and if you look what's there, the amount of space is really not a lot more. And so when you combine no demonstrated need for parking with the fact that they've bought up half the houses on 31st, it's not hard to infer that this is a Trojan horse, and that the long-term plan could be to expand the campus to the south all the way down 31st Street. And if you're a remaining homeowner, they pointed out that the lines where they own and they don't own, you're forced to sell. If this happens, anybody who's left, your property value is going to go down, and you're going to live next to construction for years, right? It may start out as a parking lot, then it becomes a building, you're demolishing houses. So if you're Mike Erdman trying to raise a family on this street, your hand is played, you're going to be forced out of your property. And I submit, I don't know if any of you have ever been to this property, right? But they're presenting this blue line as some sort of compromise? Again, this speaks to the honesty point. Why do you think that blue line is drawn? Because if you walk that property, it drops off 30 feet. The rest, everything south of that is not developable, and you can see that there's no access or egress from 31st, so they could never use it. So that's sort of being pitched as a compromise. It's no compromise. Their plan, if you even walk in those woods, there's been markings, different stakes and such, they want to develop every flat square foot of that forest, right? It will start out as the generator, by the way, which is now in view of houses, I mean, I don't know where you live, but I don't think anybody here would look forward to walking out your backyard one day and see a semi-trailer-sized generator in your backyard. And so my final point here is, without any sort of demonstration of need, look again at this picture. There's two very large lots to the left. This is an urban campus, this is not Ames, it's not Simpson, right? You deal with it in an urban way, you go vertical, not into the woods. You could, look, they've got one ramp that's marginally used, there's another lot to the left of it, we could potentially build another ramp. The two large lots, I have a hard time believing that DMU and its plans could not build a structure, additional building space, usable space, with an in-ground parking or an adjacent ramp, and ramp and house the generator in there. If it were to me, what we would be voting on would be to tear out the existing lot that they built in 2000 and encroach and return it to green space. That would be the most logical thing to do because, and what I'm proposing would cost more, but I would say that that's the CFO's job. Finance it, raise the money, right? Any institution is fundraising all the time and their alumni are doctors and medical professionals and not every doctor's rich, but they've got resources to build this properly. They don't need to go south, just use your available space. Both of those outdoor lots could have a ramp that could house cars and by the way, the additional parking, like I said, if you could, we haven't even been given any specific handfuls of times of year, most of the time the lot is marginally used, right? So for that reason, I, again, like I said the other night at last week's meeting, I don't even know why we're debating this. It's not, it shouldn't even be for debate. And that's, I thank you for your time.
I appreciate your time tonight. I'm going to talk a little bit about unintended consequences of living, you know, kind of by universities or Wesley Acres or not-for-profit colleges. Right here is my backyard to my house, so I'm on 37th Street which is just off this page. And then Wesley Acres is here and I know it's, we're not talking about Wesley Acres, but I think this will help, you know, talk about what could be coming on the other side. All of this was never supposed to be at one time. It was supposed to be green space, it was some parking, you know, they added this building here, then they added this building here, then they added this building here, then they had to add some parking here and all of a sudden they don't have enough parking. So they asked us about eight, 10 years ago if they could increase the parking here because they have so much more services they've added like adult daycare, kind of like the universities added their clinic, and they asked if they could have some parking. We contested, we asked a few things. Could you not put trash on this side? Could you not have staff park here that work 24 hours a day? And could you not plow this area at 4:00 in the morning? They said yes. Six months later, plowing, trash, parking. Staff parking, they locked their cars, it's all unintended, right? But everybody wants to hear the door lock, right? So 4:00 in the morning when they're doing transitional stuff, they lock their car and you hear it chirp. When the winter comes and they plow, they drop their blades. Bang, 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 as they plow. When they go in reverse, they have the alarms, right? Because you've got to protect the people that might be out 4:00 in the morning and so all you hear is the reverse sirens going off as they reverse back to plow. Lighting, we talked about that. They have lighting for here. I asked when I moved in, I said, is there anything I can do so the light doesn't come in our house? It's so bright. They said, I could fix it, you know, if I wanted to take the money and do it. The general manager at the time was actually really great. After we got to him and he ended up spray painting the side of the lights that faced our home, which helped, but now that spray paint started to wear off, it was coming back. You can't smoke, I don't think. Can you smoke on the campus? So, nor can Wesley Acres, so where do they smoke, do you think? My yard. Because that's off the campus. So they come over and they smoke, so you're going to get smokers that are going to come eventually around here into the neighborhoods and I pick up the cigarette butts and take care of my neighborhood the best I can. Here, there used to be about 20 large trees, 25, 50-year-old trees that were nice buffers. When I came home one day, 25 of them were gone because they decided they were a nuisance and they were hard to upkeep. So now I get to look at the entire campus. They did plant, I think, four young pine trees in this place after I called. That's probably for me. Vibration, noise, I hear all the generators. So when the belts start to go, I get, I call, I call Wesley Acres and say, hey, I think your generator, your belt's going on one of your conditioners and they say, oh, thank you. And they go change it. This generator, I think they stated, the power goes off 25 times? Was that correct? That's 25 times you're going to wake up your neighbors when that thing goes off. 25 times. And when those things go off, they're loud. No two ways about them. They could take this generator and move it right here, closer to campus, closer to gram where it's already noisier. People change. You're going to change, the city council's going to change, everybody at that table's going to change, the neighborhood stays. My house is 1910, been there a long time. I'd liked an iconic neighborhood not to be kind of destroyed by what the school says they need for parking. They work 8 to 5, we live there 24 hours 7 days a week, I'm going to be there on Christmas and Christmas Eve. The beast is never satiated. Most businesses can't get enough, right? All we have is broken promises from my neighbor at Wesley Acres. I think that's what's going to happen if you allow this to occur. Thank you very much.
My name's Eric Bergland. I live at, I live at 3314 John Lind Road. I'm a member of the Greenwood Historic Neighborhood Association and I'm not going to duplicate other people's comments, but one thing I will add to our discussion of water quality is for about nine and a half years I lived right here, 107 Lincoln Place Drive, about 80 feet from my neighbor's house that had to be torn down in 2007, purchased by the city and destroyed. The reason that that happened is clearly illustrated by this graph. This is a huge downhill slope right here. The water that comes through here is significant and by all accounts unremediated. I think it's also worth noting that there's a huge collection basin right here where all the water is supposed to go. Neither the city nor anybody else has ever addressed what happens to it after that, to echo the comments. So that's a totally unimproved basin that this water is being thrown into. The initial presentation by DMU was brought to you by an attorney and Mr. Manning, I think notably did not provide you any rule or standard or anything like that that is germane to your decision. Because this is your discretion, this is your choice. You get to decide whether this is a good idea or not. On April 6th, 2000, this panel also had that same discretion, had that same choice when this extension to Ryan Hall was proposed. Councilman Mandelbaum provided us with the minutes of that meeting and I don't know if these are in your packet, we can certainly provide them to you, but I want to hit on something that was said in the initial presentation.
We're going to have to move closer to my.
Oh, I'm going to go back, I'm sorry. So something that was stated in the initial presentation was that the reason why no more parking could occur was because they wanted a formal process attached to the parking. Well, if you read the minutes of the meeting, that, yeah, okay, so the, we have the, I don't know how to use this. So we have the April 6th, 2000, meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission. And then so here, there's a discussion that precedes, summary of the discussion. And at the bottom, Dan Flaherty asked if they would be willing to accept no further parking encroachment into the residential as a restriction. There's no discussion of formality here. Then they go on to have the discussion and say, this encroachment would extend into the residential, oh, I'm sorry, the encroachment would extend into the residential and we don't want it to go any further south than it is. And another commissioner echoed the comments that they would like that to be a condition. The point is, this is discretionary vote on your side. You may look at these homes to the south who, again, were not allowed to weigh in on any of this, you're going to hear from probably every single person who lives in one of these residences before the night is over. You would not want to be one of the people living in those homes seeing where this is going. That right there should tell you that this is not a good idea. They did not think it was a good idea in April 2000 when they decided this parking should not be extended and it's not an idea now. It's not a good idea now. So we ask that you reject this request for rezoning and to remove this condition. Thank you.
Hello, thank you, Mike Erdman, 218-31st Street, right there is where I live. You know, look, Des Moines needs this neighborhood. Des Moines needs more neighborhoods like this. You have the power to preserve it, to help. I obviously, I share the concerns that have been shared so far. Additionally, I went out and to the farmer's market and people signed page after page after page who share these concerns. Do you know how many signatures are on this petition that are in this room right now? One, me. So these are completely unique with my exception. There's page, after page, after page, after page, and then I ran out.
I'm going to have to ask you to speak into the mic.
Sure, well, basically page after page after page. And then I ran out of room, so I had to go to a double column, okay? So these are people who want, as you can read, they support trees, green space, they are opposed to further expansion of parking and diesel generators at DMU. All right.
Have you submitted those for the record?
No, I have not. I wanted to hold on to them for the city council meeting. So is there a process?
We need copies of those if you're going to show those tonight, so we need copies for the, for the record. Can you submit those to us?
Sure, yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
He's concerned about, can he have a copy for the council meeting?
I'm asking him to submit a copy.
So post the meeting, is that, I mean, after the meeting? Okay, absolutely.
Need those, thank you.
Okay, thank you. The other thing I wanted to talk about is two regulations. One's Iowa State Code, the other one's city ordinance. The Iowa State Code, Chapter 414, which is where the Planning and Zoning Commission gets its duties and its authorities, specifically from 414.6 and I also believe 414.1, has a section further down that talks about conflicting rules, ordinances, and statutes. And I'll try to put that up there. The highlighted section reads in part that if any other local ordinance or regulation requires a greater size of open spaces or imposes other higher standards than are required by regulations made under chap, this chapter, 414, then in that case, the other local ordinance governs. So the other local ordinance that would govern in this case, to me, is the ordinance that DMU is well aware of, the one that they agreed to, the one that they signed. This is a local ordinance, to me, this would take precedence over any sort of rule that would allow parking expansion. For these reasons, I request that you vote to oppose it and I don't even know that it's legal for them to expand parking. The way I read this, it is not. And I'm happy to discuss this with DMU. I've reached out to them before and I've received no response. I'm happy to discuss this with the architect, but to me, this is contrary to Iowa State Code. Thank you, thank you.
Ma'am, I'm going to, Glenna Frank with the City Legal Department. I just wanted to clarify, the reason that we are here is that ordinance that was just shown, they are recommending or requesting to amend the conditions of that ordinance and so that is in fact what the rezoning process is. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Mary Claire Uselding and I live at 3223 Elmwood Drive. I'm one of those people along the bottom of the picture there. When I look out my north and east windows, my direct view is of the property that's under discussion tonight. I don't have any pictures to show you, so maybe that's a good thing. I don't have any quarrel with DMU as a health service provider. I've had positive experiences there, but as a corporate citizen, that's another story. I have many reasons, both personal and as a neighbor, for opposing the university's application for rezoning and for lifting the ordinance of the year 2000, but most of them have already been addressed here. So I'd just like to make a few, couple of additional points. I bought my home on Elmwood Drive in 2007, moved here from Chicago after I retired to be near my grandchildren, and I fell in love with the south of Grand neighborhood, the rolling land, the woodsy feel so close to the downtown, the unique and well-cared-for homes. It's a very special neighborhood. When I found a house that I now live in, in a price that I could afford, the tipping point for me was the view. Now I did my due diligence, I asked my agent what the deal was with that property. She researched it and told me it was owned by Des Moines University, but they were prevented by ordinance from expanding their campus onto it. I dare say there are other residents who bought with the same understanding. The land in question, all the undeveloped land, is a beautiful neighborhood amenity for all who see it. It's home to deer, piloted woodpeckers, hawks, woodchucks, a pair of fox, pairs of foxes, families of barred owls, not to mention the ubiquitous raccoons. But now that all might change, which brings me to my second point. It's easy to see why this land is a tempting target for DMU. It's a relatively low-cost solution for a few of their current wants, but make no mistake, it is not low-cost. It's a cost transfer to the neighborhood which was here first and whose residents have lived here under the assumption that DMU would abide by the agreement of May 2000 not to encroach on the R180 property. And it's costly to us, both in terms of its power to lower the value of our homes and also to lower our quality of life through an increase of visual, light, and noise pollution. And I'm not even talking about flooding, that's a whole nother thing. Finally, I ask myself, and I ask you, what's ahead? Are the initiatives of the past year or so merely an opening salvo in what looks like an ongoing war? The incremental approach is like pulling the Band-Aid off one hair at a time? Is this the promise of endless conflict? Will we be here in this room every couple of years defending our homes? In addition to concerns over the future encroachment and the erosion of property values, we residents right now are paying a big price in the stress and anxiety that comes from always having to be on the alert for when DMU is going to drop the other shoe. We will bear that price because these are our homes, but that's a heck of a way to run a university. Members of Planning and Zoning Board, I urge you to go on record as not recommending Des Moines University's rezoning proposal to the city council. Thank you.
My name is Mark Quiner. I was born and raised in Beavordale. I went to Holy Trinity and Hoover High School. Growing up, I couldn't wait to get out of Des Moines. After college, I moved to Kenai, Alaska, and then to Houston, Texas. The common thread between these locations is that they seem to have lax zoning laws. During my time living in Houston, I came to think of it as a bit of an armpit of a city. I'd see beautiful historic neighborhoods bookended by parking lots and strip clubs. In 2010, my wife and Rochelle and I moved back to Des Moines. I fell in love with the city. Des Moines is everything Houston's not. Very specifically, it seems, Des Moines has grown and been developed in a way that preserves the beauty and character of the city. I live south of Grand. As many of the people in this room know, it's a beautiful wooded neighborhood. It's common sense that we should not allow rezoning of the wooded area in our neighborhood for a parking lot. I completely oppose this and urge the zoning board to listen to our voices and reject Des Moines University's effort to rezone this land. Regardless of what the zoning board recommends today, I want to remind everyone in the room that the city council will be the ones that will ultimately decide whether or not to rezone this land. I want to take this format to also appeal to our elected officials. We have a new councilman for the 3rd Ward, Josh Mandelbaum, who stated at our neighborhood meeting that he's in favor of the rezoning effort. I'd like to urge the councilman to rethink his position, stand with his constituents, and unconditionally oppose the parking lot. I would urge all the residents in the room to call Mandelbaum on the phone and voice your concerns directly. I don't know if Councilman Mandelbaum's here, I believe he's an environmental lawyer and I don't think he wants his legacy in his first term to be a parking lot.
Hi. I'm Dan Spelman, I live on 3215 Elmwood Drive. It's right, sorry, right there. Can you hear me? This is the problem right here. This little, barely see it on here, little stream that runs, I guess from their water-retention pool which they let silt over, over the past several years, runs down into this street several times a year, probably five or six times a year. That street is a raging river. It's dangerous. I've seen cars coming down the street, no warning at all, just slam on their brakes. Some of them have tried to go through it, they back out and they're about halfway through. Some of them have tried to go through it, they back out, and they're about halfway through. I remember the, I moved down here in 2012. I remember the first heavy rain we had. It wasn't a, it wasn't like what happened last June, it was just your normal heavy rain. And I looked out the door, and the first words out of my mouth were, "Oh my God." And the second words out of my mouth were to my four-year-old daughter, I said, "Don't you ever go down there when it's raining." And, uh, so my primary concern really is safety. There's a, some legal terminology's been tossed around out here. I'm a, I'm a lawyer, so, you know, I know when, when things happen, somebody's to blame. I think some of the, sorry, some of the words, the legal terms that I would, would like you to consider are foreseeability, actual and constructive knowledge, gross negligence, reckless disregard, civil tort liability, joint and several liability, cost shifting, civil damages, and possibly punitive damages. Because I can tell you right now, if somebody were to walk, were to walk into that water when it's coming down during one of those storms, they'd be swept away, and the odds are they'd probably be killed. So, I just, when they say they're gonna mitigate it, I don't believe it, just based on what I've seen. I wish I had a video of it, it's amazing. I used to, back when I was younger and dumber, I used to run Class IV rapids up in the Rocky Mountains, and they were nothing like what's coming down that street during these rainstorms. So just, you know, for the good of the neighborhood, for the good of the city, and maybe even for the good of DMU, in the case that there's a terrible incident during one of these floods, I would strongly encourage you to reject this proposal. Thank you.
Kristi Lund Logier, 3511 St. John's Road. I will warn you, I am very passionate about this neighborhood. So passionate that when the city started, the, and this is the draft, Des Moines 2020 Community Character Plan, we got on board, and I organized the neighborhood, I'm the first president. We were, we met once a month in our dining room, everybody, my husband and I have probab, we have lived in four houses in the neighborhood, people just kind of play musical houses. But I obviously am very opposed to this because what it says, "Des Moines' traditional neighborhoods have character worth protecting in existing neighborhoods. Landmark structures should be preserved. We are, we have, we have need to protect our national, natural resources. Preserve and enhance Des Moines' urban character." It's on and on, it's all in here, and this comes from the city. So, we're organized, we're passionate, we love where we live, and we want it to remain so. Des Moines University, and, has not been completely, they've not been a good neighbor, and that's what we are, and they are in our neighborhood. Thank you very much.
My name is Doug Lewis, I live at 50- My name is Doug Lewis, I live at 5230th Street. I'm actually not inside of the Greenwood Historic Neighborhood, but I do have video that was taken at 4430th Street, right next to me, and it was taken on Sunday morning, June 25th, at about 9:00 in the morning, 8:55. And this was 12 hours after-
You're gonna have to give us this electronic format.
Yeah, I'll send it to you, but you can, you can get a bit of a sense of the amount of water that was going through there 12 hours, and certainly it was a big event, we all know it was a big event. But you know what? It's not the first time. We've lived there for 25 years, and consistently, year after year after year, we have, you see how brown that water was? Significant erosion. When we moved in, in August 1993, at the time of the big flood in Des Moines, we were still having water issues long past July when the, when the waterworks was inundated. We had problems in August and in September, and when we moved in in August, 15 feet behind our property, we had an issue, because there was just so much water coming through. Now, the issue's not there, and in fact, I have another photo, and I'll send this to you as well, but you can see even from, you'll be able to see this probably better, but this is our property line now, and it's eroded underneath of our property. It used to be 15 feet out behind there. All of that water, all the water behind our neighbors, comes from Des Moines University. We have a combination of Des Moines University and water that's coming from the top of the hill, that's also been developed. So, that's all I have to say about water. The issue is really about the neighborhood, and about the, what's happening with Des Moines University. Why did that exist, and the issue exist in 2000? It didn't start in 2000, it started in 1986, 1987, when they built the Aznear Medical Clinic Tower. That's, that was just the beginning. In fact, if you go back and you get pictures of 1985, 1986, there was another street. The street's gone. The street's absolutely gone. This, all the houses that were on that street are gone too. So it's, it's just a continual erosion of not only the, the soil, but the entire area as a result of just not really taking a look at what you could do to just fix things up at the front of the property, which is on Grand Avenue, and have a nice campus. We all want that, but this has just been consistent, 30-plus years of really no concern for what is gonna happen in the neighborhood. So that's all I have to say. Obviously, I think you should vote against any change in zoning.
My name is Susan Fisher, and I live at 3239 Elmwood Drive. I'm one of, one of the properties just directly to the south. Our home was built in 1917, and we've lived in it since 1991. Our property sits directly south of Des Moines University, and Des Moines sits, Des Moines University sits on a hill overlooking our home and the other homes in the neighborhood. Our neighborhood has been around longer than DMU, and is a comfortable residential community. In fact, a community so nice that DMU advertises it in their own recruiting materials. We've lived here longer than most of the main buildings existing on DMU's campus, a campus that primarily consisted of the old St. Joseph's Academy for Girls building when we moved in. We have watched DMU add buildings and a parking ramp on its property to the north, but have known that they needed to stay along Grand Avenue corridor because of zoning prevented them from moving south. DMU backs up to an R-180 residential zoning that's been in place long before DMU occupied the site. 18 years ago, when DMU wanted to rezone a portion to add parking back toward our home and our neighborhood, it agreed, it agreed to a condition that after it received that rezoning, it would no longer expand toward the residential area behind it. That condition was placed in the zoning ordinance by the City of Des Moines Council. Now DMU seeks to change the longstanding R-180 zoning and release the condition put in place. DMU wants to place a generator the size of a semi-tractor trailer in its backyard. It will be located south of its southernmost street, where it won't have to look at it, and it will run it parallel to its property, so it will take up the least amount of its own campus. By doing that, it also puts the generator on top of the hill overlooking the homes in our neighborhood, parallel to our neighborhood, where it will have the most visibility to us. DMU should make an effort to locate this generator on its existing property zoned before it turns to rezoning property. It agreed not to rezone, and property that has been zoned for many decades is R-180. DMU wants to move parking south, and as the use of the, its property has intensified, it is not planned to accommodate that intensity, which has caused increased runoff of stormwater. But it has also increased, caused a need for increased parking. Like the generator, it seeks to push the need for increased parking off the, off on the residential property to the south, instead of using the existing commercially-used property that is properly zoned. This rezoning proposal is breaking a promise that DMU and the city council made to our neighborhood. It fails to consider that this was a residential neighborhood long before DMU tried to grow its campus by moving south. I ask that you reject DMU's application. Thank you.
My name is Nancy Norman, and I live at 3103 Elmwood Drive, which is on the corner, on that yellow corner, right here. I have lived in the neighborhood for 42 years. One of my best friends lived in the house that eventually had to be torn down, and I've lived in the neighborhood where the other one was torn down, on Lincoln Place Drive. So my concern is the water. As part of the packet that we received from DMU, there was a 7, at least a 75-page document called the Storm Water Management Plan. And I don't have all of those 75 pages with me, but based upon what I could understand from this technical document of charts and numbers, is that different scenarios are posed. What if it rains 1.25 inches? This'll happen. What if it rains 2 inches? This'll happen. Well, it's all scenarios, and I know a lot of tuition and a lot of experience went into this document, but it's still just an estimate. I'm sure that the pond behind the art center, where they're trying to clear up the algae, has a similar document like this, and it doesn't seem to have worked very well. I think they had a similar plan 40 years ago for the ledges, where they said flooding would never happen for 100 years, and it happened the next year. So, having lived there for 42 years, having seen the water come rushing down that creek for a block, taking a left to go toward the house that the gentleman talked about who lives on 30th Street, it's real. I once asked Mr. Grasso, I believe, in order to do this parking lot, would he have to put in fill? And he said, "Five feet of fill." Well, keep in mind, I live downhill from Des Moines University. So five feet of fill to me is a lot bigger number than five feet if you're standing up on that parking lot. I too have randomly gone to the parking lot location where, where they already have cars, and to see how many cars are parked there. The first morning I went was early, who do you think was parked there? The construction trucks working on the stormwater plan. I've been there at 2:00 in the afternoon, it's not full. I've been there at 4:00 in the afternoon, it's not full. I've gone to events there, I've gone to class there, I've gone to physical therapy there, and I've been able to park. So, people aren't driving as many cars as they used to, so I'm not even sure this is a, I don't think it's a scientifically explored idea about how many parking lot spaces they need. And you know, this is populism. I have never been prouder of my neighbors.
My name's David Stewart, and I live at-
You might have to raise it up.
My name's David Stewart. I'm at 3103 Elmwood Drive. So I am right here. And I just want to say that I too am, am opposed to the proposal by the school, and ditto to everything my eloquent neighbors have said before. I don't have a whole lot to add, I just wanted to say one thing about the children that live there, because my 12-year-old daughter, the last thing, you know, she said to me when I left tonight was, you know, "Don't let them take away the, let them, tell them, ask them to leave that area unchanged for the deer, and the occasional turkey, and the foxes, and owls that just with this kind of random serendipity come into our yard. We can see them in the woods there. It's beautiful." There are not very many of these heavily wooded areas inside our city limits, and I think we should protect them. And, again, I second everything that my neighbors have said before. Thank you for your time.
I'm Shane Larson, I'm at 3317 Elmwood Drive, on this property that's represented by this yellow area here. Two years ago, this past August, my wife and I and our four children moved here from New York City. Since that time, and purchased that property back in February, under the review that there would be no more development within that area around us, so we, we're blessed. We have lots of acres of wooded area, plus there's lots of undeveloped area around us, and it's gorgeous. It is what I would call, I am a full-time farmer, and I would qualify all of that area as highly erodible, and I think it's pretty clear, even if a farmer can't build on highly erodible land, why would you allow development in a highly erodible area to happen? I would also say, you know, since we have moved here, there have also, I am aware of at least two other families that have moved here from New York City. And my point is, is that, congratulations, you've created a very unique neighborhood. A neighborhood that when people come from out of town, come to this area of Des Moines and say, "This is unique. This is something I may not get in another city." And, you know, it's great to hear some of the community members that have lived here for, for so long, and it is, it is turning over, where there's, there's more kids that are coming in, and like I said, I've got four kids within this neighborhood, and the whole reason we bought here is the kids love the open space. Couple things I would note. One, I'm a, we all in this neighborhood pay a substantial amount of property taxes. This year alone, we had a massive increase in property taxes. And that's based on property value, that will surely do nothing but go down. It may seem inconsequential that they're only asking for a parking lot and a generator, but what you've really heard is incremental and additional amendments. And that's really what this is all about, is trying to preserve the neighborhood as it is. Please also note, you had no votes indicated from this, this region here. Had you crossed the street or gone anywhere else? Again, no votes, and there's a reason, there were no cards. There was no cards, you saw no vote from me, 'cause there was no cards, well, perhaps in the mail, I've missed it, but no card. The point is, is that I think you've stoked the entire community into angst because of this, not just this development, but the potential development that will be incremental. The lady using the term incremental Band-Aid and pulling it off a hair at a time is so fitting here. So, again, tax dollars are at risk, property values are at risk, and I, again, I think you've stoked a community that is highly out there voting for their community members. So, again, thank you for your time. I would only ask that you reject this claim. Thank you.
I'm trying to manage, we're gonna lose the quorum, and I, and the commission would like to take action. I just need to know, are you the final two speakers? Because we have the potential of losing our quorum.
And I appreciate, my name is Julie Moore. I'm at 3219 Elmwood, and I appreciate your endurance through this. That is the location of my house. I am directly east of the drainage basin that comes through. So really quickly, the few points that I want to make is just, I, I agree with everything that's been said. The lack of need, I have not seen that in the past year. I, as a patient of DMU, and a neighbor, drive through there regularly, and I've seen lots of open spots. So again, it's, I haven't seen the, I guess I would like more of a study as far as the demonstration of the true current need. That one, there's two things that have not been mentioned about, is the elevation, is there's so much light pollution already down to us, especially this time of year, and so as development continues, that would be another thing. Another thing is, you talk about this being an urban campus, you have DMU students who don't really have walkable access to other green space. We see, from where I'm at, a lot of times, students back there playing frisbee, hiking around, especially on the weekends, we'll see that. And with the limited amount of green space, I think that's something to consider, and it's a big asset, I think, for DMU to say, "Hey, we do have this spot where kids can also recreate, who, you know, live right around campus." The last thing I want to say is, and nobody's really touched on, is there's actually three notable streams that come together in the back northwest corner of my property. So again, I use the MyDSM mobile app that the city has wonderfully provided. I frequently use it, you know, numerous times, you can look up my history, to request the city to come out and clear the drainage basin, and that's located right, oops, right at the top of the eraser there, as far as that is to help gather the water and hold it a little bit, but it's just overflows and storms. It gets clogged with logs and trunks, trees, there's been multiple times where there's been deer carcasses in there, because it does- There's been multiple times where there's been deer carcasses in there because it does, it gets caught in all that water, and it really is not a safe thing. In the July, or June-July event, I had the water was actually 6 feet from the west side of my property. So, again, it's just one of those things that, the thing is now, it had been said, "No, that this wasn't going to happen. We'd like you to consider keeping it as is so we don't have future concerns of water" and my house being the next one that floats down the street. So thank you so much for your time.
I live at 3219 Elmwood. I've lived in a lot of places where they have flooding, and I've seen some pretty impressive flooding. And I got to tell you, like June, I was in awe of the amount of water that came down that little tiny little stream, lifting pieces of asphalt out of the road and moving them. And later on, people would drag them back and shove them in the spots like little puzzles. That can be solved by more money. You can throw money at the detention pond and create more ponds and end the flooding problem, or at least mitigate it to the point where it doesn't exist. But this isn't about that. This is about the Trojan horse. We're starting it now. Incrementally, we've heard it, we've heard everybody's argument. I've been around developers and developments, I know what's going on. They know what's going on. In fact, if you listen to what they talk about, it's in the future. It's coming. It needs to be stopped. There is, there's already things that were passed, initiatives that passed, there's letters, there's, there was votes, agreements. They don't want it. The neighborhood doesn't want it. We don't want it. Why do they keep pushing? It's, it's time to stop this. Thank you.
Okay, this time, applicant, you have a few minutes to rebut.
Seven minutes. Three. Three minutes.
Commission members, I'd just like to remind you, you will lose a quorum in about less than five minutes. So if you're going to take any action, you would need to do so before the quorum is lost. And there can be no deliberation or voting after that quorum is lost.
So what, what is your recommendation?
Well, I would recommend that you can do one of two things. Obviously, a rebuttal is due, and that can be as quick or as needed, but you could either contend, continue the hearing, you could vote to continue the hearing, or allow for the rebuttal, and it will continue de facto because you will not be able to act. So that would be January 17.
Could they allow the rebuttal and close the hearing and then come back and take action?
It has to be continued.
No, but his point is, could we have the rebuttal prior to continuing?
Could I interrupt and just say that we, in, in the spirit of time, we will not submit rebuttal other than to, to be available should this body have questions for us.
All right, thank you. I will close the public hearing, and it was a pleasure of the commission.
I would like to see it continued so we have time to really look at everything.
And you're telling me to continue to our January 17 meeting?
Yes.
Are you making that as a motion?
I would like to make that as a motion.
All right. Is there any discussion about this motion?
I'm the one that has to leave, and I apologize for that. I, I just want to, I want to thank the neighbors for showing up. I think the challenge I have is, is someone that's been appointed and a volunteer is that the applicant and the neighbors are so far apart. I work in the area, I appreciate the historic value of the area, I understand the preservation of the trees and the wildlife and all that, and I also, you know, I'm exposed to, to the runoff in these areas, and I know how bad it is. Adding a parking lot is not the solution at this point. Obviously, we have major water retention problems in this area, so I would not be in support of staff. But, you know, I appreciate the neighbors showing up, and my hope is, is that DMU can come back with a plan, and the neighborhoods can come back, and everyone can find middle ground to make this work. That's all I have.
Any other comments before we vote? All right, so the motion before us is that we continue this item to our January 17 meeting. I just want to ask staff if there are any issues as far as moving this to the council, if we continue to the 17.
No, it would just go to then set hearing on January 28th for hearing on the first meeting in Mar, in February, I believe it's February 11.
Okay, so there, there would be no unreadiness to send it to the council at a later time?
No.
Okay.
Can we comment first? I think you'll get it.
We've closed the public hearing, sir.
And so the, the hearing, well, they need to vote about continuing this hearing to January 17.
So when they, I have a question on that. If they continue it, is it reopened for the public to speak again if it gets continued to another meeting?
Yes, it would be.
Okay. So we'll hear all these comments repeated, or?
Possibly, yeah. Okay.
But, Madam Chair, I have a question, but it is true that all of the testimony today would be recorded and would be appropriate for the next time that we meet.
Yes, yes, we would. It would be on record, yes. I just wanted to ask the question.
All right, so we have a motion. Are you done? We have a motion on the floor to continue the item to January 17. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All right, motion passes. So we will, was there any, no votes? I'm sorry. Okay. All right, so our final item tonight, we, we're going to, we're going to take our office late at our January meeting, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Mike, you have anything?
Yes, I have.
Meeting tomorrow, city manager.
We just, we need to know if anyone is attending the meeting with the city manager?
No, tomorrow, only if you showed it to them.
Uh, excuse me. We do need to finish our meeting, if I might ask. We need to finish our meeting.
Do we have anybody attending the meeting with the city manager tomorrow at noon?
We mailed to the property owners.
Okay, we will let them know it's not on. Thank you. No meeting.
So that would include all these apartments?
Nope, not necessarily. The width of Grand Avenue is nearly 200 feet.
All right, so Francis.
Well, given, I mean...
We'll adjourn the meeting.
And that would have gone to...
All those people were here. Who did you manage?
Can I adjourn? We're still in the meeting.
It doesn't matter, we lost it. The 4% is only based on a 200 distance.